Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Doug Neely, City Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, City Commissioner.
Please stand and join me in the flag salute.
(inaudible) the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin each meeting in 2009 with a sesquicentennial moment because it is Oregon's 150th birthday. And so this evening Commissioner Smith has a rare and unusual fact about the city of Oregon City. Commissioner Smith.
The last city commission meeting I was in San Diego for as a representative of the city in South Fork Water. And so tonight's sesquicentennial event or moment is regarding that, South Fork Water. Pioneers believed that any running water was pure. They said drink a cup in any or dip a cup in any creek and the water is safe to drink. Singer Creek that drains Mount Pleasant in Oregon City ran across the upper part of town, actually near where the new city hall building is, and down Singer Hill. It formed a pool up at the top where many boys would catch crawfish or crawdads. And one of those little boys was Carl Green. Carl Green who lived nearby came down with typhoid. Everyone along the Willamette and its tributaries used the river for water if they had no deep well. Surprisingly, those who did not depend on water from the river developed, those that used the river actually developed typhoid, many of them did. Oregon City's water from above the falls was considered pure, but after mill workers contracted typhoid and epidemic numbers, the city installed a filtration plant at Third and Main Street. It was the pride of W.B. Howell, the water superintendent, and was claimed to purify the water. Notwithstanding, typhoid continued to plague all of those who used it. A knowledgeable doctor suspected that typhoid came from contaminated water and ordered the citizens of Oregon City to boil all the water that they used for drinking. Mr. Howell was outraged. Nevertheless, the council appointed a committee to search out a pure supply. Far up the South Fork of the Glacamas River, the water tested pure and the intake was established. A pipeline began its torturous way down the mountain and Westland bought one-third interest in the project to have pure water for its residents. And now it's 50/50, Oregon City and Westland.
So if you didn't know, now you know that South Fork Water means that our water in Oregon City comes from the South Fork, the Glacamas River. Great, thank you. One of the prerogatives of being mayor is that we get to proclaim. So this evening we have a proclamation which has to do with the fact that in Iraq we are bringing troops home, but in Oregon we are sending them there. And so one of my fellow mayors, Mayor Jack Hoffman in Lake Oswego whose son is being deployed, thought it would be great if all the cities in Oregon passed the same proclamation declaring support. So this is it. Whereas the members of the Oregon National Guard play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Americans and increasingly provide a vital public service to Oregon citizens. And whereas the Oregon National Guard has consistently demonstrated its value to our state and our nation. And whereas our military personnel face urgent and perilous duties associated with their National Guard responsibilities. And whereas the families and loved ones of our military personnel face unique and challenging obstacles throughout each deployment cycle. And whereas 2,700 members of the 41st Infantry Brigade Combat Team of the Oregon National Guard will be deployed overseas for 11 months. And whereas Oregon Air and Army National Guard troops have fulfilled over 10,000 individual mobilizations in support of ongoing military operations in Afghanistan, Iraq, and throughout the world. Now therefore I, Alice Norris, mayor of the city of Oregon City hereby proclaim July 2009 to be Oregon National Guard Month. And I encourage all citizens of Oregon City to join in this observation and support our National Guard. Moving on, we're looking at the agenda. Is there any item of business that any commissioner wishes moved forward or out of the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Do we want to look at the issue regarding the swim thing first? The funding?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Yes, that's a good idea. Because we have many people in blue t-shirts here this evening, we will move item 7(c) forward. We'll take that first on the agenda. Is that? Oh, I know. Just, oh, yeah, I did. You're right. I will move back to it. Yes, Commissioner Nocita?
If the commission is okay with this. I would like to consider item 7d before we consider item 7a because my thoughts on 7d are kind of a preference to my thoughts on item 7a.
Goes reordered, okay. No problem with that. Anything else? Okay, that's the reordering of the agenda and then we'll move back as we already reordered, back to citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to talk to us on agenda items that are items that are not listed on the agenda. I have no one that signed up to speak this evening on non-agenda items. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. No, we'll move on to the reordered agenda and talk about the situation at the Oregon City Swimming Pool, the starting blocks issue with funding and equipment modifications that are necessary. And Mr., who's doing this, Scott Archer, our community services director. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Norris. I'll give you an introduction to this topic. You are all well aware, I think, at this point of the issue with the starting blocks at the swimming pool. At one of your recent commission meetings, Brian Watt came forward as a representative of the Oregon City Swim Team, which I think we've got a few of those folks here in the front row you might have noticed tonight. And Mr. Watt, on behalf of the Swim Club, has been working closely with myself and Denise Kai and are attempting to find a solution for that issue to basically to put the starting blocks back, to do the things that we needed to do because of some state rules that were discovered that safety requirements and liability issues. So Mr. Watt did a fine job of basically as a volunteer coming up with a solution for a city issue and came forward at the recent commission meeting and requested of the commission to fund two-thirds of the estimated price of making these necessary repairs to put the starting blocks back. It's estimated that the project was about $18,000. And so based on feedback from the commission, we've put this on your agenda tonight for your consideration and are putting forward the consideration to approve up to that $12,000, which is the two-thirds of the cost. If you were to fund that, the recommendation would be that you would do that out of your contingency funding. And if the, I mentioned to the commission, if the project were to be funded and go forward, we would work closely with Brian and the Swim Club members that have been involved with this. And we would do this project at the time of our annual shutdown, which is in September, because of, just basically because of the interference with the activities of the pool. So while it's shut down, it'd be the appropriate time to do that. So with that, I guess I would offer to you that Mr. Watt and a number of representatives are here from the Swim Team. And if any of those folks, I don't know if they'd signed up to speak or not, but I certainly think Mr. Watt would be prepared to answer any questions about that and as would I if I can help as well.
Great. I have two people that have signed up. Brian, I don't have you down. Did you want to come up and talk or shall I call on Tim Watt and Rob Whiting?
I think that would be broken, ma'am. And if you have any questions or anything to elaborate, I think I'm more than happy to get out.
Okay.
If you have a lot of car, I can get out.
No, 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 that's fine. Why don't the two of you come forward? You must welcome together, share the microphone. Please introduce yourself.
My name's Tim Watt, I live in Oregon City, here since 1970.
And my name's Robert Whiting, I live in Oregon City and I've been here for about 10 years now.
Okay, the reason why the starting blocks are important to us is because we need to host competitions. Not only do we host USA Swimming competitions, but we also host United States Masters Swimming competitions. We have a number of sponsors who have provided money to our timing systems, to our lane lines and other equipment we use for swim meets. Parlumber, the Bush family, Bush Furniture has donated like in excess of $15,000 for equipment at this time we cannot use because we can't host swim meets. Typically, a one-day swim meet, a masters meet, will have at least 80 people. If we are able to host a zone meet, which is every three years, a Northwest Zone Meet for masters, it's a three-day swim meet. We usually have about 150 people come to the Oregon City area and stay overnight for those two nights. For typical USA meets, we have about the same numbers, probably more, probably more like 200-plus swimmers. In talking to Brandon Drawes, who's the Aquatic Director of Mount Hood Community College, he said when they did a feasibility study, when they renovated the Mount Hood Swimming Pool to world specs for competition, the financial impact per day was about $150 per person that the city of Oregon City would see for an overnight stay. Not only does the pool make money when we rent the pool, but the swim team makes money. It's a major fundraiser for us to provide equipment and other services to our swimming members. People from all over the Pacific Northwest come to our pool. People come from Canada, they come from Alaska, Washington, Idaho, Oregon. And the reason being is that we're a short-course meter pool, which is very rare. And in the metric system, the FINA, which is the Internet or the World Governing Body for Swimming, recognizes world records. And we at this time in Oregon have a few people that are setting world records, so it'd be kind of a cool thing to be able to host competitions and put Oregon City on the map for some world record swims.
Raise your hand if you're going to set a world record in the next 10 years. All right, I see four. Thank you.
In addition to that, the Oregon City High School and Gladstone High School uses the pool during the school year for winter sports. And typically each school will host three or four meets. For example, Oregon City in the Three Rivers League will swim against Lake Oswego or other schools in our Three Rivers League. Not having the starting blocks meant that this year we had to lease the Malala Pool. And so our home meets were in Malala. And so that being said, again, we like to bring as many people here to the city as possible so they can spend their money here in Oregon City. And unfortunately, this last year, that was an opportunity lost. So there are residual effects for the high school season as well. Granted, the draw isn't 200 swimmers, but three or four from each school, each bringing about 20 to 30 swimmers and their families from other areas hopefully would be good for the economics of the city of Oregon City. And I think, Tim, also, if I may add to you, I believe we were, for the masters meet, the regional zones competition he was talking about, we were actually approved to host that meet and unfortunately had to withdraw our application after being approved because we could not provide the opportunity for that masters meet to occur with the blocks and what the others. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the issue, the statement, and you've brought your raised money, so what do you want to do? Commissioner Smith?
I really appreciate the amount of work that's been put in by not only this group of volunteers, but so many other volunteers in Oregon City who take the time to raise money for our facilities and our responsibilities really. And I think that it's amazing to see how many of you turned out this evening to talk about this. And I think it's time that the city step up and take care of this tonight. So I move to approve up to $12,000 from the general fund contingency towards the replacement of the swimming pool's starting blocks.
Second? It's been moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Is there a further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, please pull the commission.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes three, zero. Four, zero. Commissioner Neely and I are having a little yes, I thing going on, so I was not counting his vote, I guess, but it. We appreciate that. It is important for us to take care of our own facilities and go off and win many ribbons, medals, and break your last PR.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As we move on to the next item, that will be a public hearing on ordinance 9-1003 to amend ordinance 8-1003, a development agreement with John Jones Construction for a regional stormwater facility. And who is doing so? Mr. Patterson?
City Commission approved the original development agreement and ordinance in 2008. That development agreement set up an amendment when the final costs were done. So the development agreement now sets the final distribution for the 442 current and future lots that we use upon at $2,244.42 per lot. It also, and this is because of the economic situation, extends the payback period from five years to two years. And future development in the area will be conditioned in their land use process in regards to the use of the pond. And Mr. Cullison's here and can answer any questions in regards to this. This does require a public hearing before action.
Mr. Cullison, you want to come forward? Well, does anyone have any questions to ask for this?
I do.
Okay, I guess, come on up. Commissioner Neely?
I think I understand what will happen in terms of new developments. That is, they will be contributing funding for that particular source as those developments come on. Is that right?
That's correct.
And we've had a similar situation in the South End Sewer where they build out the whole sewer system and as other developments came in, they were paying for that infrastructure. Basically, it's a cheaper way to operate.
That's correct. They not only save the land space because they'd have to build a pond, it also immensely helps our public works ops guys not having to maintain six or eight more ponds, but rather just one, so.
The question that I'm actually posing though is the city will reimburse Jones for the 88 existing homes. Now, one thing, I presume those 88 existing homes are already serviced by some kind of the detention facility, or are they not?
Yes, that was all part of the original deal was that we did a land swap, and you may or may not remember this, but we did a land swap of the existing pond that was built for those 88 homes, the property that Mr. Jones had bought on the corner of Maple Lane and Thayer. So we did a land swap there as part of the original development agreement. And so, yes, we're transferring those 88 from the old pond that's been taken out now and they go into the new pond.
But I assume those residents are not pulling up any additional money in the process?
No, that's all part of the city payments.
So this is then coming out of what fund? The amount for the?
Stormwater SDCs.
Oh, water SDCs. And so there's no issue from coming from SDCs even though those residents were served by a previous one? Well, that was basically my question. A little confusion on the green sheet, maybe the confusion's my own. We're talking about John Jones Construction, we're also talking about the Jones property. They are probably not the same Jones?
They are the same.
They are the same Jones?
Yes.
Okay. When I look at the attorney's seat, and we got an issue here dealing with potential future legal issues because we don't, I presume part of it stems from the fact is we don't know when the new facilities, new residences will be built. The timeline for which they're going to get repaid for their services is probably unknown.
Absolutely. We've taken a guess at it, but.
Yeah, and I presume that's where some litigation might ultimately come. I mean, we've got a statement here and I'm getting a nod from our attorney, but maybe he would like to address that.
One thing I would add is that we've still left the door open for Mr. Jones to come in and ask for another extension.
Right. Have time?
I think, I mean, that may or may not fix it, but.
Really nothing more to add. It's, we're trying to do the best we can to take care of all contingencies.
When we're talking about now, just to make sure, because it is the same Jones, but when we're talking about what is here, we are actually talking about any litigation or anything regards to city and John Jones Construction, not Jones property owner. Is that true? I'm asking the attorney.
It's really an agreement with the property owner because it's the land use designation that is bargained for to be changed so as to allow this arrangement to be entered into. Jones Construction either owns the property as Jones Construction or is involved with the actual works that are going to be done on the property.
So anytime we're using the term Jones in this agreement, we could be talking about in one case Jones Construction and the other case property.
We're really talking about the landowner Jones here.
The reason I'm asking is that we're putting the agreement as made by the city of Oregon City in John Jones Construction. Should we actually modify that?
If Jones Construction owns the property, which is what I understand, then I think we're in.
There's no issue.
There's no issue.
Okay.
Mike, it took me a long time to kind of figure this out, and I think I have. On the last page where you have a schedule of charges, under the SDCs down here that are not applicable, those will be applicable later, I assume, but they just aren't applicable for this particular repayment. Is that true, the stormwater, sewer?
They're not part of the agreement.
Of this agreement, okay.
One of the things that the development agreement requires is that you try to lay out everything that's out there.
Okay, that's what I figured.
So when somebody comes in to do a building permit, to build a home on one of those four lots, then they will incur these fees, yes.
Yeah, okay. That's what I figured. Any other questions or a motion, please? Commissioner Neely?
I'm a little confused. We're dealing with this as an ordinance. Is this a first reading issue?
Yes.
Yes. And you have to understand law, deal with it as an ordinance.
Okay.
Why is that? What's the?
Because they said so.
Oh. Well, there's lawyers for you.
I'm actually looking for some guidance. I'll try the phraseology, but I might miss it up.
Oh, I need to take a public hearing first, don't I?
Yes, we do.
I'd just like to make the comment that I'm very reassured that I'm not the only one on the commission that is the target of Ed's Irish ire.
I prefer it called, sense of humor. I would like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to testify on this ordinance?
I'd like to ask a question. Ed's Irish ire, you say?
He did.
Irish ire.
As opposed to my Sicilian ire.
Well, the former's more poetic.
All right, gentlemen.
When Irish iries are smiling.
Okay, I see no one testifying. And to perhaps cut this wit short, I shall declare the public hearing closed. And now, a motion, please. Mr. Commissioner Neely?
I'll give it a try.
Give it a try?
Yeah, I'm going to move for the first readings of ordinance number 09-1003.
That's all you need.
Due for the city to enter into a development agreement with John Jones Construction for the Jones property. Oh, heck, I don't know how to do this.
Just say the ordinance.
Your ordinance number's sufficient.
The number's sufficient. Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further comment or discussion for the first reading? Mr. Saw?
This is ordinance number 09-1003, an ordinance amending ordinance number 08-1003, which approved a development agreement with John Jones Construction, Inc., pursuant to ORS 94.504 to 94.528.
Thank you. Now Nancy, vote please.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four, zero. Next moving into general business, we will look at the salary adjustments for our management supervisors and confidential employees.
We're going to take 7d first.
7d with first. We agree. 7d first.
Oh, back up to A. Oh, I thought it was just going, okay. We will do that, Ben. This is instead a resolution 9-19, an exemption from competitive bidding for a contract for the South End Road pavement reconstruction project. Mr. Patterson's.
Mayor, Mayor, members of the commission, this project is a coordinated effort with Icon Construction, who is the developer of Cornerstone Development Project. And this is for a reconstruction of a portion of the South End Road across the development frontage. There are public benefits from coordinating with the developer's obligation with this paving, given the scope of services. And again, Icon Construction Development solicited bids for this project. I think they had three that they had received. And this is for the milling and paving of this project. They did select the lowest bid. Subsequent to receiving those bids, city staff negotiated with Icon as the general contractor. And we concluded that the price result is a cost savings because it avoids duplication in regards to bid solicitation, mobilization, and coordination of the work of two contractors. Icon, because they are the developers, are familiar with the project and the site constraints and can assess the methods of construction and the needs of the project more rapidly than a new contractor coming into the work. Secondly, the work will be installed simultaneously with other improvements of their development, again, saving some of the mobilization costs of doing that. And third, this more coordinated construction zone by joining two separate projects into one will reduce the disruption to pass-through traffic during the time. We have budgeted $117,897 for this project, and that comes from your pavement maintenance utility fee.
Okay, Commissioner Nocita?
Okay, I wanted to start off with this, and I really want to express my anger about it. We are considering this tonight because we continued this from the last commission meeting. And at the last commission meeting, we specifically stated that we were continuing it because we wanted more specificity regarding the calculations of the savings that we would incur by exempting this from the public bidding requirement. And we were told that we would get that information tonight as part of this meeting. It's not here. And I'm really frustrated at the fact that we did make a specific request as a commission and we're basically getting the same item shoved back at us, saying, you know, we're not giving you the information, but pass this anyway. And I'm just not going to do it. I'm very upset at this.
Trying to remember what we did.
I should indicate that I did call this afternoon to do that, and again, because I've been tied up on other work, so I didn't get to make that call until this afternoon. As you know, Ms. Crushhour is on vacation and John Lewis had left on vacation as of noon, so I missed that. I did talk with Jim Birch, he did not have that figure himself, but one of those two did. I did put in a call to Ms. Crushhour. She has not returned that call as of yet, so I apologize for not having that.
Yeah, I'd only respond that, I mean, we've had, that initial request for that could not, should not have waited till this afternoon, but it should have been made. And Ms. Crushhour was actually present at that meeting when we requested it, so I'm, you know, I'm just not going to accept this. Staff can come back at a later time with the information, but I'm just not.
I'm going to go ahead and move it if you hold it over.
Can we hold it over?
I assume, again.
So that information was requested? Thank you. Do we need a motion?
Yes, you put, we should, July 15.
I said I moved.
Oh, you moved it, so. Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith to hold this resolution over till our next meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Can I ask a question on the green sheet?
Mm-hmm.
It says here, in 2008, the city adopted a pavement ma- It says here, "In 2008, the city adopted a pavement maintenance utility fee. A portion of the fees collected are to be spent on reconstruction and restoration of existing pavements." I've always told when people ask me that that's what it's all supposed to be spent on. What's the other proportion supposed to be spent on?
I think that's what it's supposed to be spent on.
Okay, all right, good.
Yeah, because we don't do sidewalks, and it's all pavement maintenance, and we don't do new, new streets for it either.
So the portion in this case is 100%, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions on that one? All right, we'll see that one again. Uh, next, we will go back to the general order, so 7A, management, this is the salary adjustment contract for this next fiscal year with management, supervisory, and confidential employees. This would be our human...
I'm going to have Mr. Lefler present this to you. Let me indicate to you, this is for management, supervisory, confidential. This is the COLA increase. This does not include the city manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I present before you this evening the proposed budget adjust, correction, uh, the proposed salary adjustment for management, confidential, and supervisory personnel. It includes a 3% cost of living increase, which is what was budgeted in the approved budget that was passed last, last meeting. It also includes two new positions. One is the library director. The other is a, a confidential, non-represented office specialist three, which, that's the assistant to the city manager position. And there are two minor compensation market analysis adjustments for the assistant parks and rec director, moved up from salary range 149 to 152, and, uh, moving the public work ops, operations manager from 152 to 153. There's no immediate salary increases to those positions because they are already within the salary range. It just, it makes their, their high end, it extends their high end. Uh, as you know, the police are contractually receiving a 2% salary increase effective today, uh, followed by another 2% increase effective January 1st, and we are currently under, uh, still in negotiations with the ASME unit that I'll be presenting at a later date as we get closer to finishing up our negotiations.
Okay. Are there questions about this report? Commissioner Neely?
You know, my question basically centers on, because we're apparently recovering management, uh, positions, but we're also covering positions that are union positions. Is that correct?
Yep.
Or are... This is only management...
So then none of these actually are union?
This is management classified.
Management classified supervisory. I mean confidential.
I mean, there was an ASME reference here, so I wasn't quite sure.
Oh, that was the, that's the confidential employee, and that, for that individual to be able to do their position, they need to move from the bargaining unit and become what's called confidential because they're going to be working for the city manager and, uh, and working with contracts and, and labor, labor type negotiation.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Nocita?
Um, I just wanted to clarify. Uh, Mr. Lefler, you indicated that these are all reflective of, um, what we've already passed in the, in the budget?
The 3% is what was in approved budget. That's correct.
Do you have more questions?
No. Uh, I move your...
Commissioner Neely?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move approve of the management, supervisory, and confidential employees salary adjustments as indicated in this sheet, uh, this document.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, second, uh, Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nocita. Is there further comment or discussion?
I have some further discussion.
Okay. Commissioner Nocita?
Um, first I want to, the reason I want to ask for discussion is to explain why I asked that the previous item be, um, moved up ahead of this item. Um, and I wanted to relate my anger at that item, at, um, what we're being asked to do in this item. We, um, I want the public to know, the citizens of Oregon City, that I, at least, as a city commissioner, have kind of been engaged in a low-level, maybe medium-level intensity institutional struggle with staff regarding my request for information. Um, it's, it's been going on since I became a city commissioner, and, um, I've really taken some of these information denials to be intentional and kind of like an in-your-face affront to put me in my place. And, um, it, it concerns me because I'm an elected official representing the city of Oregon City, providing oversight to the city of Oregon City, not to be able to get this information when I ask for it. Um, and the last item was, I mean, just, I'm typically either at an urban renewal commission meeting or a city commission meeting like this, calling out, um, instances where I feel that either staff is not providing insufficient information or no information to make a decision, and that last item was one of them. And I've been starting to reflect on ways, um, to resolve this problem. I think it's a more really significant institutional problem than I, than I actually anticipated when I got sworn in, and I'm reflecting on ways, um, to resolve it to everybody's satisfaction. It may involve introducing policies, it may involve even charter amendment suggestions. Um, but I was really, um, just kind of viscerally, as an elected official, concerned, I think would be a charitable way to put it, at being asked, um, to raise management salaries, um, when I have these concerns about upper-level staff, um, and the city manager not providing me with information or the commission within information when requested. So, um, I had actually considered, um, a no vote on this because of that. Um, I won't vote no on this, I will vote for it, but I do want to, um, let the public know that this issue is going on, and I'm not one to shrink from, um, friction like that, and I will, um, continue to work to vindicate, um, a commissioner's right to information in order that a commissioner needs to make judicious decisions, uh, as, because a commissioner is accountable to the citizenry. Um, so I'll leave my statement at that.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm pleased, Commissioner Nocita, that you separated out the communication issue from the salary issue. Um, I, I think that that has a whole different set of, of issues to talk about, um, and, uh, I think we can talk about communications. We'll never get that right. We talk about that every year, I think, and, um, that's something that we, we work as a team, so I think this needs to be resolved as a team as well. Um, any other comments? Commissioner Neely?
Yeah, I just, I would just pose the question of the best way to perhaps have a constructive discussion about this, and, uh...
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I mean, I guess I do have a concern that perhaps the city manager did not pull this previous item himself, and, uh, and, uh, how, how we can, how we can improve this. I, I don't, I surely don't want to go out through the rest of this commission's, uh, sitting with, uh, these kinds of issues before us, so I think we need to identify some kind of a pre-communication, communication process here that enables us to probably deal with some of these issues.
Yeah. Okay.
So, how do we do that?
Well...
And I think we could actually put that on a study session.
Yeah, I think we, I think we can too, talk about that. Uh, let's, uh, get back to this motion then, and, uh, is there any other comment? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes for a zero. Next, we have...
Adam Booth.
Item 7B, resolution 9-20, adopting Mountain View Cemetery fee increases. Mr. Archer, Director of our cemetery.
And many other things.
And many other hats.
Um, Mayor Norris and Commission, at your June 9th, uh, work session, I presented a proposed, um, list of Mountain View Cemetery increases. Essentially, this resolution that you're being asked to, to approve just formalizes that discussion, and, uh, it seemed that there was support to go forward with this. In, uh, in a quick summary of what we talked about at that session, the, uh, Mountain View Cemetery fees have not been increased in, in quite a few years. Um, the, the fees that we're proposing are approximately about a 50% across-the-board increase. That may sound like a pretty good-sized jump, however, um, with our market analysis that we've done, uh, in looking at some other cemeteries around the area, uh, the quality and the type of cemetery services that we offer, uh, and the fact that we haven't raised these in, in quite a few years, uh, even at these raised rates, we feel like we're still a little below the market, um, which is, um, probably okay, and, again, there's a, you know, this cemetery provides a great need in our community, and also, not to be lost, is that, um, these fees do also support our historic Pioneer Cemetery, which is something for the entire community to appreciate and, and hopefully enjoy. So, um, this proposed fee increase would be effective today, although, um, we will, we will not actually implement the fee increase until August 1st just because of processing and, and getting things online. So, uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we're recommending approval of the resolution that increases the fees according to the attached, uh, price increase list.
Commissioner Neely?
One, one thing that's come up on several occasions, um, and, and related to this, but, um, is that the, the way of dealing with death and what happens to somebody after they die has really changed a great deal in, in this country. Uh, a lot of people that, uh, would have, at one point, chose, chosen a traditional burial or not choosing that, and, uh, I'm, I'm going to bring it back and, uh, ask the question, uh, do you think raising the fees would actually result in a reduction in the people that actually are going to reserve plots in this particular cemetery, and would that ultimately hurt us?
Um, a very good question. Uh, I, I would have to say that, that we're not overly concerned that that would be the case. Um, excuse me. We, as I indicated, still feel that even at these increased rates, um, that we are still below a market value when we do a comparison with similar, um, types of cemeteries, the, the level of service that we offer. Um, one thing that I would comment on regarding that, that concern is that we do offer a wide variety of options, including, um, cremation options, uh, very small cremation plots, which actually are a, a growing trend in the cemetery industry because of, um, growth in the human population and the loss of land in urban areas especially. Uh, there's a, there's a kind of a trend in cemeteries that people are going to, you know, try, try to use up less of, of the land that's available, and so therefore, a popular thing right now is a cremation garden or a cremation plot. Those are very inexpensive ways to, 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 to take care of your remains. We have those available for as low as $150. Um, so, and, and lots in between that, all the way up to our crypts and, and, you know, in our mausoleums and so forth, and so, a lot of options. That could be a concern, although I don't frankly expect that that's going to be a major issue for us.
It's a secondary issue to this, but, um, early on in my commission time, we actually bought additional property for the cemetery. Uh, I would like you to look at the trends in use and to see, in fact, uh, whether that land the city purchased, uh, in any foreseeable future would, would come into play. That is, or is there sufficient room in the current cemetery to, to handle the kinds of, uh, services that we provide in the foreseeable future? Uh, and I'd just ask you to look at that at one point or another, and...
We will.
...just through the city manager.
Uh, we'll do that. We, we have, um, I don't know if you're aware of this or not, Commissioner, but we have begun burials in that section.
Oh, we have.
And there are, there are, yeah, there are a number of...
Oh, okay.
There are a number of, of graves in that.
Okay, well, I, I, maybe they'll keep it.
No development will be happening, and then, yeah.
It's, uh, well, the reason...
I remember, I remember taking my son when he was a kid to see Polar Geist, and it disturbed him a great deal.
The, the, the reason that you may not be aware of that, if you just simply drive by that newer section, and you look out, what you basically see is, is just grass. And the reason is, is that we have a policy in that new section that was developed several years ago before I was here, and I don't know exactly, you know, why this was developed, but to only have, um, flat gravestones put in place, so there are no erected...
It was for maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah. When, when I was first on the commission, the cemetery was bleeding red ink, and it was really a huge problem in, in the financing of the city, so, um, I think we've stabilized. And also, at that time, we were looking at contracting out, trying to find someone either to purchase or to run the cemetery, and, um, I, I like what we've done to tighten up the operations and make, make it more mainstream, and I think that, uh, since you've done the market study, it looks like this increase is very well justified. So, with that, may we have a motion for adoption of this resolution, please?
Yeah, I move to adopt, uh, resolution 0920.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there other, are there other comments? Being done, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes for a zero. Next, we have a resolution, uh, a second reading of ordinance 8-1014, which are the municipal code amendments, which I believe this is our, uh, 14th hearing or something like that, um, including the planning commission. I wrote that down. Yep, seven plus five, including tonight, so that's 12. Right. Mr. Drenlaw, how are we doing on these code amendments?
I just, um, well, we did catch one typo. After all that, it's under attachment, it's, uh...
Is your mic on?
It has to, it has to do with expiration of approvals, and, um, you'll see originally we had that applying just to type four.
We already did.
And our, our intent and all our testimony had to do with all types of land applications. So, I believe, uh, Mr. Sullivan will play a reading of the first reading.
If, if you want to do them all, you've got to do a first reading. A suggestion might be, you could hold off until you have your automatic review of these things in six months?
I don't know if it's a dozen, maybe just...
Yes, you can. If you want to do it, but you're going to have to go through a first reading again, and you wouldn't be able to adopt until the next week.
And that's because of the typo?
It's more than a typo, it does make it...
Makes a difference. So we can't do the first and second reading tonight together?
You could if you want to.
Okay.
By habit, you don't.
Right, but that's the recommendation we have before us, is to do first and second together.
You can do first and second tonight.
And the only reading you have to do is the existing, the version, right?
Right. The revision of that one section.
Yeah, that's not that.
There's no requirement in our ordinances that we have to declare an emergency in this.
No.
No.
Okay.
So, um...
I move for first reading of ordinance number 081014.
Clarification. Are you, are you moving to do the first and second reading together?
I don't think we can do that.
You can do that, you have to do that separately.
We have to do it separately, though.
One after the other.
I think we have to do, we can do one and two tonight.
We have to do one and many other.
But he, he, he does have to read it twice.
So this is just... It's just the first reading now, for this motion. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nocita. For the first reading, Mr. Sullivan.
I need to get the ordinance, uh, it's got in here.
It's coming here. Uh, where is it?
I better get you something to see.
I have it right here.
I can go ahead. There it is.
Ed, I have it right here.
Okay. Thank you. This is ordinance number 081014, an ordinance adopting revisions to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan Map and zoning map and adopting amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code. The, uh, I'm going to have to read now 17.50.200. You have it as, I think, an attachment in your materials, but I need to read it. Expiration of approval. A, um, when approvals become void, colon, "All type Roman numeral one through Roman numeral four approvals, except for zoning map or comprehensive plan map amendments, automatically become void if any of the following events occur." Colon, one. If within two years of the date of the final decision, a building permit has not been issued, um, for no land divisions...
Uh-oh.
Uh-uh. You both say the same.
Or no...
That, a double negative? That's nonsensical, to be honest.
It could be if no land division has occurred. Is that what you mean?
No.
All right. I will read it as such, all right? Or no land division has occurred. Or, two, if within two years of the date of the final decision for all land divisions, the activity approved in the permit has not commenced, or in situations involving only the creation of lots, the public improvements and conditions of approval have not been completed, or financial guarantees, guarantee in parentheses surety, close parentheses provided. Period, end.
If I might ask--
Commissioner Neely.
Are we certain that's what it meant? I'd like to--
Do you want us to give you time to check?
Can we take a five-minute break and just make sure--
Yeah, I think we should probably check on what was meant--
I'll go to other items, and I'll talk with Dan outside.
Be sure. Okay. We are recessed for five minutes. Considering new wording now for this--
It's only slightly modified, Madam Mayor.
Code amendment. Okay, Mr. Sullivan.
The change that I would hope would be included in the motion after I've read it is as follows.
Okay.
17.50.200, expiration of an approval. Sub A, when approvals become void, colon, all type Roman numeral one through Roman numeral four approvals, comma, except for zoning map or comprehensive map amendments, comma, automatically become void if any of the following events occur. One, if within two years of the date of the final decision, a building permit has not been issued, semicolon, or, all right? So, we're doing away with that surplusage words. Two, if within two years of the date of the final decision for all land divisions, the activity approved in the permit has not commenced, or in situations involving only the creation of lots, the public improvements and conditions of approval have not been completed, or financial guarantee in parentheses surety, close parentheses provided. Period, end.
And if I might--
Okay, thank you.
He gave clarification in terms of what this meant, and I would request--
I'd be glad to do that, too. As I read it, if you, first of all, plan amendments and zone changes are not covered by the expiration. Once you enact those, they are good forever, or until changed. But if you have a conditional use permit, variance, historic review board approval, any other permit, it doesn't expire if there's no building permit involved. It does expire if no building permit has been issued for two years after the permit has been approved. And the second part about it deals only with land divisions, and that's unchanged.
Okay. Any further clarifications needed or questions on this one?
I take it the motion and the second are okay on that?
You'll concur with the--
Yes, I'm going to ask a question I would have asked after the second of the motion. In any case, my understanding is this in no way is retroactive. That is, if you have something that's been a year already in the process, it's not going to affect that at all.
This is perspective only.
Yes.
Okay. Further comment or discussion? Seeing now, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Now, do you wish to consider a second reading this evening?
I do.
Okay. Commissioner Nocita.
I move that we move to approve, move that we move, I move that the City Commission approve the second reading of ordinance title number eight, 08-1014, municipal code amendments, legislative file L-0801.
With the changes read by the city attorney.
With the changes read by the city attorney.
Okay. May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nocita, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Now, for the second reading, Mr. Sullivan.
This is ordinance number 08-1014, an ordinance adopting revisions to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map and adopting amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code. The one change will be in section 17.50.200, expiration of an approval. Sub A, when approvals become void, colon, all type Roman numeral one through Roman numeral four approvals, comma, except for a zoning map or comprehensive plan map amendments, automatically become void if any of the following events occur. Colon, one, if within two years of the date of the final decision, a building permit has not been issued, semicolon, or, two, if within two years of the date of the final decision for all land divisions, the activity approved in the permit has not commenced, or in situations involving only the creation of lots, comma, the public improvements and conditions of approval have not been completed, or financial guarantee in parentheses surety, close parentheses provided. Period, end.
Thank you. Are there any further comments on the second reading? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nocita.
Aye.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. And the last item of--
If I may just make--
Excuse me. Yes, please.
You mentioned that this was the 12th government body evaluation and public meetings and so forth. The reason is true, it's very important, and we've had a lot of input at each one of those, and there has been revisions made. And I think, actually, I think it's to our credit that we've actually given--
I agree.
This much detailed attention to this particular action.
I think it speaks to its importance, and I do, I'm glad you stopped me, because I was going to say that this may be the most important motion we've passed this year. And the planning staff has worked, how long have you been working on it? Two years. Yeah. It's--
It requires a lot of work.
You did. It requires so much work and attention, and I think, again, to your credit, you have taken the concerns and the issues as they've come along and bundled them up, and we have way better environmental protection, we have stronger code amendments in all of the categories. So, thank you very much for your work.
So, just so I'm clear, have we now adopted those amendments?
We have.
Yes.
So, Oregon City now requires a demolition permit?
Yes.
In 30 days from now.
Okay, in 30 days.
These, yes, that's a good clarification. In 30 days, these all become our, part of our city code.
Well, at the risk of having Dan throw his cup at me, I'd like to say that I look forward to the next round of interim revisions as well.
Okay, thank you. Now, the last item on our business agenda is new Internet Protocol Services for the New City Hall and other city facilities. Is that Mr. Archer?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead.
Mayor Norris, and Commissioners, I would like to introduce you to a term that you may or may not be familiar with called VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol. So, that's a term that I think you might hear more about.
I know. Actually, it's the P-word I couldn't get. I knew the V-word, but the P-word--
Protocol.
No, the P-A-E-T-A-C.
Oh, Paytech, I'm sorry, yes. Paytech is the contractor.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Paytech is just a contractor, a company name.
Okay.
But VoIP is the system that we're talking about.
Yeah.
This does relate to our, specifically, the action that we're asking you to take tonight is a contract that relates to what would be the phone service for our new City Hall. However, this will be a multi-part contract that will be bringing further amendments to you to add additional services so that we can basically put the entire city on the system. This basically kind of branched out of the City Hall discussion, and here's kind of the background on that so that you understand what we're doing. And I'm going to give you some information that is slightly different than what's in the staff report. There's, the staff report speaks to the broader citywide issue, but all we're asking you tonight to do is authorize the portion of the contract that is related directly to the new City Hall. During the process of our, just examining all of our technology systems at the new City Hall, somewhere along the way, it was determined that the best way to go would be with a voice-over-internet type of phone system, because it provides much higher levels of service. It connects directly into our city fiber network that we've just created in the last couple of years. So, it taps that resource, and it provides a lot of better features and better usability than we have in our current phone system. And also, the big good news here is it's a better system, and it's much, much cheaper than what we're paying right now for phone services, because in essence, we use our own fiber system, and it's all Internet-based. So, through this process, with our project manager for the City Hall project, and then with David Knoll, our information services supervisor who's here tonight, he's the guy that if this, if you have any questions that are technical, I'm going to ask Mr. Knoll to respond to.
May I?
Will I even finish?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Okay. What we're proposing is that we install a voice-over-internet phone system. It requires new hardware, which is part of our City Hall project budget, and that amount is about $24,000. This is a service contract. The purchase of the hardware, as we've done with some of the other infrastructure items, such as things that we discussed earlier tonight at the Urban Renewal Meeting, the hardware would be purchased with that Urban Renewal budget. This is an ongoing city service. So, those types of items, this is like paying the light bill or the, you know, whatever types of ongoing operational things we would have, just as we do at our current City Hall, we pay our phone bill. Therefore, those are a general fund item for the city, not an urban renewal item. Urban renewal is just for the building and all of its ancillary things. So, this process involved asking for quotes from the vendors that provide this type of service. We received either four or five responses to that. It was a very, very detailed and pretty complex type of project. We asked for a lot of specific things, and Mr. Knoll, and actually Ed Welsh, with our Information Technology Department, helped quite a bit with that as well. Paytech is the company that came back with the best response in terms of both price and functionality of the system, and having the ability to provide those types of things that we're looking for. So, what we're looking for tonight is approval of this contract, which is for 60 months. It's a, in the amount of $2,815.50 per month, which, if you multiply that over the five years, it's $168,930. Therefore, it requires your approval for that ongoing contract. The service savings for, just for the service of the, what we're, compared to what we're paying right now, is immediately with the first year, for just the City Hall building, is $11,000. When we add the rest of the city, which I'll let Mr. Knoll speak to how that process will kind of unfold over the next year or so, the savings could be as much as $25,000 for the first year, and significant savings beyond that. With that, I would, I don't know if Mr. Knoll wants to add anything at this time beyond what I've explained to you, but I would be open for questions.
I think--
Commissioner Nocita.
I think I should interject here. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll let Commissioner Smith confirm this or not, but given the position that he and I have staked out on in the City Hall at this point, this isn't going to pass. It'll fail two to two. So, I think that this should be adjourned so that Daphne can be present for the vote.
May I make a comment?
Commissioner Neely.
This is your decision, of course, and you've indicated no support. I think, I think you've got to look at the situation. A person calls City Hall and wants to talk to Parks--
Yeah.
They're given a phone number to call for Parks. A person calls, I think the same thing's true of Public Works. If you call into the City Hall, you want to speak to Public Works, they're going to give you a phone number. This is a system that I believe should have occurred in this facility if we didn't go there, and I think it ought to be looked at in that context as a function of City Hall as opposed to the new building. Because right now, it is an extremely inconvenient communication operation. And I think I'll go ahead and put the motion forward in that particular way. It's more of a case of how City Hall functions--
Services.
--as opposed to where it's located. And it is really inconvenient. I think a person coming in that's, and sees that they've got to jump through some hoops to talk to a department in the city, it would be very off-put. I mean, I have been, and I think it's very frustrating. And if we were to remain here, I think we would try to look at this kind of system in any case. I'm going to go ahead and put forward the motion. I understand your concern about City Hall, but this is really an issue about communication, not City Hall.
Good. I thought David, go ahead and--
Thank you. I'm David Knoll, the Information Technology Supervisor, and I would agree with everything that Commissioner Neely has stated. There are a number of advantages to this, not just money-wise, but it is truly a citywide issue, and that's the way that we approach it. One of the advantages that Commissioner Neely touched on was the ability for a citizen to call the city, and we can set up a routing queue so that a receptionist at City Hall can pick it up, and if they're not there, it goes right to the next receptionist in another facility, perhaps. And that's all invisible to the end user. Automatic forwarding, forwarding set up by the user itself, storage of voicemail to your computer as a voice file, there's just a number of possibilities of the way that we could use this system. The first part is to install this at City Hall, and there is sort of a time, a timeframe to do that in conjunction with whatever construction is going to happen down there. The extension to that and some of the other numbers that you see in here are the big picture of how that's going to extend to the rest of the city. And the big savings is really going to occur when we add more facilities onto this. We can drop the rest of our frame relay, we can drop our existing, currently integral costs, and bring this all onto our fiber system, which, by the way, we just completed this week. We've, we're not connected to City Hall, Public Works, the new City Hall, Pioneer, Community Center, and Community Development. So, with those five units, they're connected on a spoke system from the hub of the EFC, the fire station. So, they're not dependent on anything other than that one hub. And I'll answer questions.
Commissioner Nocita.
Mr. Knoll, would this system work for this building?
Not on the portion that you are deciding on tonight, but yes.
Okay. And would the portion we're deciding on tonight extends to the Public Works Building currently under this?
It does go to the Public Works Building, yes.
And it will go to the Planning Department?
It already is connected to Community Development.
It already is?
Yes.
Not with, I don't want to make sure we're not confusing the issue here, that not with the phone system yet, but with the fiber--
The fiber--
So that we have the capability, which is what we're talking about, is adding on to this phone system citywide. So, those links don't occur until we actually put those, the VOIP system in place at each of those buildings. I just want to make sure that--
So, is this a case that the fiber system exists, but our ability to utilize it does not? And like I say, we could be dealing with that perhaps whether City Hall is located here or not.
That's correct.
That's a distinction I want to make. I wanted to ask a question, too. If the, I presume this, as the fiber network increases, we could do other things. I could visualize, for example, there are calls coming to City Hall that are appropriate for the chamber, or they're appropriate for some other entity. I presume this at one point could be, we could route a call to some other agency or organization that's not even part of the city, even the county, if they think they're asking for a city service. It might be possible at some point in the future to round it to the appropriate entity that has that responsibility. Not at this point, but in the future. Is that true?
I think your vision is correct, and it is dependent on some other resources that they, that other agencies have in place. But that's true. In fact, with one, with the system in place, you can take your phone and plug it into another outlet anywhere in the city, and it's still your phone, and you will call that phone for you.
Can you give us an idea of the timeline for moving this into other departments' areas if we approve this?
I would recommend that we move fairly rapidly after the initial push of the new City Hall is decided. But I would guess that over the next year, that can be done. I would expect that it could be done much faster technically than it could be, it could be done quite quickly. The process of changing our phone system over is relatively simple, the fiber's in place. So, we could probably move as fast as a couple of months. I wouldn't expect it would take more than six months if we wanted to go on that long.
Commissioner Smith.
Because of the fact that Commissioner West is not here tonight, I think Commissioner Nocita brings up a good point, but also Commissioner Neely brings up a good point as well. I was debating whether or not, how I would vote on this, but our Community Service Director points out that this is very much for the City Hall. I do not, of course, support that project. I, however, realize that this is important for other buildings throughout the city and eventually City Hall when we get to that point, obviously. But I can't support it, so I will abstain.
I want to go ahead and--
Okay. Commissioner Neely.
To move to authorize Paytech, is that how they call it?
Yes.
Provide voice-over-internet protocol, VoIP, services for 60 months for the new City Hall and other facilities.
Actually, it's not other facilities, correct? Did you change that?
That's correct. This particular portion of the contract is just for the new City Hall, and then we would bring forward later those additional.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second it. Moved by Commissioner Neely, second by Mayor Norris. Commissioner Nocita?
Yeah, I just want to let folks know, I will be voting no on this. I think this is a great idea. I don't mind if it's brought back to us when Commissioner West is back. If it doesn't include the new City Hall, I'll support it. And if she, you know, provides the majority vote to pass it, you know, I can respect the majority commission's decision on that, but I won't support it tonight.
Thank you. Is there further comment or discussion? Nancy, the vote please. Commissioner Nocita?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Abstain.
Mayor Norris?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one with one abstention.
And this is an interesting, this is the first vote where this has come up since my tenure here, and I have a procedural question for the city attorney. If the, there's not a majority of the city commission voting aye, so does this vote fail?
It does not.
Simple majority.
It's a majority of the board.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, David. Look forward to this. It will really improve efficiency in the city. Okay, next, the consent agenda. We have a motion for adoption. The consent agenda, please.
Some move.
Commissioner?
I'm going, I'm sorry. You asked, and I can't even remember why I want to do it, but I'm going to ask to pull 8B. I had it marked here, and I didn't do it.
Oh, sorry.
8B.
All right, we'll pull out 8B. So Commissioner Smith, will your motion be for A, C, D, and E?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And a second?
Sorry?
Moved by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Neely. On the consent agenda, Nancy, the vote please. Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. And now, 8B, which is a liquor license for Hoagies Pub.
Probably going to go to Chief Conrad. I guess the wording, more than anything else, confuses me under the background. The request is an expansion of services their business already offers is the point of confusion. I know we have one kind of license for what I assume are things like beers and wines, and another one that could involve hard liquor. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear what that meant. Usually when you have taverns, which Hoagies is, oftentimes you do have hard liquor. I think I've had a beer there once, and I never thought to, but that is what's involved here.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And in that case, I will.
Please.
I will move that the application by Hoagies be approved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, second by Commissioner Smith. Nancy, please poll the commission. Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. That ends the business agenda, and now, how about communications from our city manager?
I was going to call on Chief Conrad to talk to you about the grant he's received.
The police department received. The police department received word on Monday that we had been awarded a grant from the Department of Justice, and this is the grant that the commission was made aware of about a month ago for equipment. And if you recall, we are going to use the grant to purchase eight radios, portable radios for the police officers, and three speed measuring devices, which are basically laser units to measure speed.
Great, congratulations. And are there any other grants the city has received?
Mr. Archer?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I'd be happy to let you know about another grant. We have been, recently received notification that we're receiving about $332,000 combined between two sources for the basically complete repair renovation of the sport craft landing boat launch, which has been in need for many years. This award is coming from two sources. One is our Oregon State Marine Board in the amount of about $166,000 and some change from the state voter funds. We applied for that as an actual grant and presented that a couple of weeks ago at the State Marine Board meeting, and we received word that we were awarded that amount. And that was matched by a, some federal funds, also in about the same amount, $166,000 and some change, through the federal sport fish restoration funds, which are actually distributed through the Department of Fish and Wildlife. So we'll be finally repairing that project. This is something that we've been working on for quite a while. We're still, we're still finalizing our permits on the project, and I'm not sure what the timeline of the construction will be based on awaiting the final approval, because we have some limited in-water work periods that we have to work within, and so therefore that'll kind of drive whether we're going to be able to do that this year, but most likely it'll push into the 2010 calendar year, unfortunately. We're pushing to get it done as soon as we can, but doing the best that we can, so. And I need to acknowledge the work of Denise Kaya, our assistant parks director. She's done a tremendous amount of this work, and it's been really a two-year project in terms of just the permitting alone, and then this funding package coming together for us. And also thank the city commission for your support of the budget, because we've got about $100,000 in cash match to leverage with that 332,000 that we're receiving.
Congratulations again. That's really good work.
If I may.
Commissioner Neely?
In spite of the name of the ramp, that is in fact a city-owned ramp. It's a publicly-owned ramp. It's not a privately-owned ramp. Anybody can use it, they don't have to pay any fees.
That is correct.
Maybe we'll have to rename it, put a name on there.
Couple other quick items. I think you are aware that ODOT has been meeting with downtown business owners and merchants. The city, of course, has been involved in that, talking about some of the mitigation efforts that may come to pass with the Arch Bridge closing. And right now, those kind of centering on about three major topics. One has to do with the traffic circulation patterns in downtown, and one thing we will be looking at is possible reintroduction of two-way traffic on Main Street. That would involve taking out the bulbouts, that would involve some restrapping, probably reorientation of parking meters along Main Street as well. Of course, in doing that, there is a loss of parking in that area as well, and that's one of the things we'll have need to look at. There's been the discussion as well about the possibility of some sidewalk enhancements as part of that bridge project, particularly along Main Street, and that's Eighth, Seventh Street as it attaches to the, to the bridge. That, ODOT is very reluctant on that portion of it because of the connection with the bridge project. They see that as a disconnect. I think we might see that as more of a connection. That may not be as easy a mitigation form to come to pass as perhaps the other. There's also a lot of discussion about signage, directional signage, trying to direct folks off downtown into, or off 99 into downtown, and with the multiple ingress and egress, there's some issues in regards to the amount of signage and how that's normally done. I know some of the owners would like to see some of the signage that indicates restaurants or food, that sort of thing. A little bit more complicated because ODOT normally does that along interstates, not necessarily a state highway. But we'll be exploring that topic, and of course, you will be hearing a lot of discussion too in regards of maybe the, a relaxing of some of the standards in regards to sandwich boards. So those are all things we're discussing. Additionally, we are, have scheduled meetings in the next month to visit with the various stakeholders for the downtown parking study, and we'll be talking about the recommendations and how we implement those and addressing any concerns that those folks have. So we'll be moving through those various stakeholders, having those discussions as well. And Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Yes.
I'd rather comment. In spite of our, well, I'll call it negotiations with ODOT regarding the bridge and so forth, we've got a, we've got about a two-and-a-half-year period before that bridge is operable. And I think some of these things that we brought up, and the one that is near and dear to former Commissioner Bob Bailey, and it's sure, I think, to many of us here, was to have a very good pedestrian connection from the elevator down to the river by that bridge. And I'd like to see us maybe do something with ODOT, but even if that's not true, if we can actually start the ball rolling in terms of trying to seek funding for that to happen, whether it be through the urban renewal agency or whether it be some kind of granting process, because it would be too bad if we want to do that, and in fact, we're not able to do it in conjunction with what's going on and come back later and do some things there. I think it would behoove us to try to see if we can put that all together, how we do that. It's something I'd ask you to explore.
We'll take a look at that.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, communications from your liaison positions. I know you do. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah. I attended the American Water Work Association's conference in San Diego, and along with Counselor Carlson from West Lynn, and Mayor Galley, and John Collins, our operation manager for South Fork, and our attorney, Laura. We spent five nights in San Diego and learning about water, which I'm so thankful for because of all the things that we have to do, and all the things that I have to do as a new commissioner, water was the one thing that I felt I needed to learn the most about. And I was able to learn a lot.
You remember about cryptosporidium?
No, I was waiting for that. The mayor brought up, what was the term again?
Cryptosporidium.
I definitely do want to know what that is, because the whole.
You'll have to go next here.
Prior to the conference, she kept bringing up the fact that I was hopefully going to learn about that, and I didn't. So maybe you could tell me about it. We, me and the representatives from West Lynn spent three days of the five as attending a public official's tract at the conference, which was focused on a lot of different topics. And the first day primarily was an introduction to water and sewer operating systems. Even though it's a water conference, a lot of municipalities, of course, joint water and sewer operations. So there was some discussions and some good information about both sides, water and sewer. The first day kind of just gave us the basics in terms of the requirements that cities have to follow in terms of drinking water, clean water acts, and all those different things, and the history of how those acts were all put into place based on different events throughout the nation's history. Also talking about issues that currently face water systems and topics like pharmaceuticals and the issue that cities are having with the amount of pharmaceuticals in the water. The first, the first session, we had to solve this puzzle, and we were given a stack of pieces, fire hydrants, pipes, water sources, water storage, treatment facilities, and all this stuff. And as, in groups of eight, we had to lay out all these puzzle pieces on the floor and see if we knew how water got from its source to the houses and to the businesses of the city. And there was this really vocal group that we were a part of, and everyone was, of course, had their viewpoints, and Mayor Galley was sitting there directing me to move various things different places. And I actually did fairly well, being a new person, but at one point, there was a debate within our group about where certain pieces should go. And so I roamed over to the group next to us, and I was accused of cheating.
That's just called collaboration.
And I said, I said, no, I wasn't cheating at all, I was just hired a consultant.
Yes.
Anyway, so, you know, we did a perfect job, and it worked great. The second day was focused on water and sewer infrastructure, and one of the interesting pieces of that, we've talked about with the Recovery Act and a lot of other things that throughout America, cities are dealing with this problem of this infrastructure, not just water and sewer, but everything, roads that have been round for way too long, and the concern of the cost that it's going to take to replace a lot of that infrastructure. But the important piece of that was that, a lot of the fear of that is that, of course, all this infrastructure is just going to all go kaput at the same time, which is not true, that, you know, there's kind of a curve that you're going to see, and kind of tackling the needs that you see at first, you can actually, cities can actually do quite well in tackling that infrastructure problem. So that was, that was very intriguing. We spent part of that day looking at our vision statement for South Fork Water. The comment was about vision statements, and so all the different entities and representatives from around the United States kind of shared their vision statements, and we talked about the good and the bad in terms of what those vision statements say. And so we were doing a little work on ours, and I don't know if we'll keep, I hope it will keep going on that. Perception is reality, and that, that was, that's true in so many other areas, but when you get a glass of water that's brown and a glass of water that's clear, you assume that the glass of water that's clear is the safest one to drink, but that's not necessarily true. And so kind of how that perception kind of goes out into the community and how to deal with those types of things. There had a huge exposition with, you know, booths from all sorts of different companies, and so we were able to look at membranes and things like that, which is something that we're going to be talking about at the South Fork Plant. Attended one separate session from the certificate program on rate structures, which is something that we all felt very much that we needed to go to, because talking about the hopes that we would, in the future, maybe talk about block rates and based on usage and, you know, the more water you use, the more you pay, which would not only lower possibly rates for citizens who aren't using much water, but also help in the efforts to conserve water. So I was really, really happy with the experience, and I learned a lot. It was nice to kind of get away from the city and work with these people and get to know some of the people that I'm going to be working with on the water board for the next couple of years. So I really thought it was worthwhile.
Now, when Commissioner Maybe went, he brought us some gifts and giveaways, so.
Oh.
So where's the stuff?
They're in my car. I'll, I do actually have some stuff. John does too, I believe.
Thank you.
Free pens and stuff like that.
Hey, we want the good stuff. Thank you. Well, good, I'm glad we got our money's worth, and that you got your money's worth too.
I do have a report to make, but I have a question of Commissioner Smith. Did this conference have anything to do with the topic you decided to talk about, or Sisquik Centennial moment?
Did it?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I was looking for a Sisquik Centennial moment, and I was doing, just reading Oregon City trivia kinds of things anyway, and I found that section relating to water, and very much wanted to share that tonight.
That's great.
Yeah, I love that.
Yeah, that's great.
Commissioner Nocita?
I also have a question, a couple of questions for Commissioner Smith. One was, did the conference just deal with domestic drinking water, or did it also deal with sewer discharges and stormwater discharges as well?
Everything.
Okay.
I mean, it really did cover everything. There was a whole, I mean, hundreds of different workshops and various things that you could go to, and we, I personally picked ones that I knew were, we were going to be dealing with, and like I said, three out of the five days were very specific in terms of the track that we were taking as public officials. But, yeah, they offered lots of different workshops on all sorts of various topics.
So the follow-up question would be, if they offered workshops on sewage discharge, did the conference give you any insights onto our current WIS? did the conference give you any insights onto our current wastewater partnership negotiations?
No. No, and I didn't, because I didn't attend ones that--
Go with that. Thank you very much. Do you have, who has your report? Commissioner Neely?
Well, the Urban Rural Reserves Policy Advisory Committee to the County Commission, which I serve on, has finally gotten through the rural reserve recommendations. There's an anticipation that the urban reserve discussions will go much easier. I'm not quite sure that's true. But it's been an interesting process. There's been a tremendous amount of discussion. I think the group was such that probably all of the interests, conflicting interests were represented in those discussions. And I think there's always a benefit to that. But it is very, very clear that the general consensus in Plaquemines County is that we do want to preserve our rural farmlands. And it's been an emphasis that you've seen in this particular county, perhaps more than it's been seen in some of the other counties served by Metro. I did make a request, and I'm not sure when it's going to be dealt with. I'll make the request again. As it stands now, we talk about Beaver Creek in some very general terms, but in terms of the discussions that occurred, Beaver Creek was looked at in what we, basically a section that exists between ourselves, the community that I think we generally, in terms of some buildings that exist as a Beaver Creek community, extends further east through the Abernathy corridor and further west through part of the Beaver Creek sub-basin. But that particular one, the only thing that's been designated as rural reserves, I got to be careful because there was a, there was a poll taken. This, and this, the nature of the poll will be reported to the Board of County Commissioners. It wasn't as if we approve anything. But the general decision on the votes that had been taken, and we came back to Beaver Creek and there was, in this last meeting, and there was a change, and that was to include in rural reserve designation, the Abernathy Creek and Beaver Creek, Beaver Creek, the creeks themselves. I know there's been some other discussions, but in fact, staff has put forward that particular designation as land features as a basis of including them in rural reserves. And we were operating under the, those kinds of conditions that were, those kinds of definitions that were actually put forward. But that was the only area that was designated as rural reserves. We're going to come back to the urban reserves piece. There is no requirement at all, in fact, that it won't happen, that everything falls in either an urban reserve or a rural reserve in this particular process. But we are looking at 50-year land supplies to be included in the, in the urban reserve discussion. And I had to ask to bring forward what the commission feels in terms of its, I'm talking about Oregon City's expansion itself in the southern--
Yeah, I think we had that on the work session, don't we?
Okay, is that coming work session?
Yes.
Okay, that's very good.
We asked for that last--
We, we, I mean, although we had a joint planning commission, city commission discussion, that was focusing on how, how that, what areas should be evaluated in the particular process, and that's fine. It didn't, it did in a way, however, reflect the aspirations of the city of Oregon City as an entity in terms of where it wanted to expand. And I think that's something that we really need to deal with, and I think we need to deal with it before specific recommendations are put forward to the county in the designation.
Yeah, Tuesday, we'll talk about it. And the, just, you didn't mention that the third designation is called "undesignated." That's where essentially areas of disagreement probably will lie.
Well, it probably won't--
Not all, no, not all of it.
Because, and you've had some discussion in the metro area, that these, these natural areas are areas that would be perhaps prone to such things as landslides and so forth, are both issues of urban and rural concerns. And it may well be that those areas in fact get drawn out into an undesignedated area, not because they're agriculturally important, but because in fact, there are areas that should not be developed either agriculturally or for urban purposes. So they may not be bones of contention, they may be, they may not be serviced by either group.
May not fit either of the criteria.
May not fit either of the criteria.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I have my report.
You're just, you're finished?
Well, no, I have something else, but if--
Well, why don't you go ahead? Yeah, complete yours and then--
Sorry. I had forgotten that I went out with a group, the group to the solar panel, the solar project. And that was, that was really great. Learned a little bit more about that as well, and so that was great. And I also went on the first ride with the mayor of the Green Line for the new MAX train, which was really great, too. But I wanted to apologize for my comments earlier to the city manager if it implied in any way that he was not doing his job or not present when I commented about the fact that we, I came in on last Thursday and that he had already left for the day. I dismissed him by a matter of a couple minutes and had not called previously to make an appointment with him. So asked whether that he was going to be in the next day. And I knew that he was at the golf event with the chamber, which I fully support as well. And so that is why on Friday, or on that day, I called and made an appointment for Monday morning. So I want to say that I did not intend in any way to imply that he was not here or not doing his job, because he was.
Thank you for clearing that up.
There's confusion in the city commission. This is something that came out in a different, at a different venue. It didn't, it didn't come up here.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Nacita.
Okay, I had the opportunity to invade Mayor Norris's turf a few days ago. I attended my first neighborhood meeting of the Rivercrest Neighborhood Association and got to know many more folks in town, and it was a very delightful meeting. It's timely that Commissioner Smith mentions the solar highway project because at that neighborhood association, that was the most vibrant part of the discussion was--
Of course.
--the issue of the solar, the solar panels on that solar highway project. I commented to that group, you know, just so other citizens can be inspired by it. I've really been impressed by how this issue has come, percolated up from the grassroots and gotten the officials to respond. And I'm very impressed with the way staff and ODOT and others have responded to it. I regret that I have obligations that prevented me from taking the walking tour, but I do have every intention of attending the town hall that has been set up. So that's, that's an outreach opportunity that I have to share. I want to take this opportunity to see if I can inquire of the city manager as to, do we have the agenda for the work session next week set in stone? What is, what is on that agenda at this point?
You have the joint meeting with the planning commission, which is urban rural reserves. You'll have this issue on communication, water rates rollback, and I think water and sewer issues is kind of what, as I recall, the topics are. But we can add something to that.
I just wanted to remind you that I had sent out that email requesting a discussion of the hiring of an economic development coordinator.
Okay.
Thanks.
And I have one other thing, too, before you, I need to ask you about--
Okay, Commissioner Neely?
I wanted to make the comment. I went on this, looked at these solar panels as well. One of the concerns brought up by one of the citizens, I can't recall whether she brought it up to the citizens, comments that I heard from her at another point, was a light reflecting back. It'd be, first of all, a statement was made that actually, on our trip, the, the degree at which light would hit the panels would actually reflect it away from Oregon City. The other thing, in terms of its reflection capability, I put my head right on, it was a very sunny day, I put my head right on top of it, and you could tell that there was this kind of a mass there. And it looked a little lighter here than the rest of it. That's all you could tell. I mean, so it really doesn't--
It doesn't absorb.
It's a radio-efficient system.
Not only did he infact it, he encouraged others to do it as well.
I thought you had less hair today.
Okay, thank you. I have, I do have a few things. I neglected to bring forth a letter from the chair of our library board, which may have come in April. So it's, he had to send me a second one because I somehow deep-sixed it. So I apologize for that. But it was, I would just wanted to verify my initial response to him. I said we'd get back, but it was a request to meet with various stakeholders and us, of course, working with the board to find a location for the new library. And I believe that we talked about it, that we wanted to wait for that kind of work until the new library director was on board and could really lead that charge. Is that correct? Okay, I will get back to him again then and express that we're eager to work, but need to have her on board. Okay, secondly, the solar town hall is June 29th. So Wednesday, June 29th, and you're all invited, I believe it's here.
July.
What did I say? July? Yeah, it's not next year. July, I'm still a month behind. July 29th, and is the location here? I think it is. Yeah, at City Hall. Okay, MPAK is getting very interesting. The Metro Policy Advisory Committee, we're, of course, dovetailing with the reserves process. And a couple of interesting things. One is that there may, that we're considering a possibility that centers and corridors can be, can change their designation. So if we don't want to be a regional center, we can change. Or I was testifying for the construction excise tax before the Metro Council, and a woman from the Realtors Association said, well, she's very interested in Oregon City, for instance, adding a town center up on top of the hill. So I just want to let you know that some people are talking about that. I don't know where that came from. But she said it makes sense, and Portland has multiple centers. Other, I don't know if any other cities do, though, have multiples? Multiples? Not, I mean multiples. So we would still be a regional center, not change the designation of the city. But she suggested that because we have the development up here, including the Beaver Creek Concept Plan and Park Place Concept Plan, maybe it's, would be good to have a town center designation up in that area. So I just throw that out. Yeah, we've talked about Hilltop, I think.
Just to clarification--
Yes.
--the whole of Oregon City is not the city center, is that correct?
No, no, the regional center is essentially the urban renewal--
Yes.
--area of the, of the community, essentially. Yeah. And then we have, Metro Council did adopt the construction excise tax, and that's the money, if you recall, that funded our, two of our concept plans and is set in reserve for the third concept plan. The, this will be, I mentioned to you before, a little different criteria, but want to let you know that Dan Drenlaw and I will be meeting with the Metro, the Metro folks to talk about the administrative rules. And another interesting thing that's happening, which I think we need to spend some more time talking about in many combinations, is that part of our discussion seems to be leading to doing a concept plan prior to moving the urban growth boundary. And I, in my mind, I'm kind of unclear as how that works, and I think everyone else is too, but we've been spending discussion time on that. Do we have the concept plan first, then move the urban growth boundary? Again, I'll posit how that works. But the funding source is getting there. Just again, to show you some of the issues, as you know, we're, we're, we need to establish at Metro, the, when to move the urban growth boundary. It's supposed to be next, 2010 is when we move it or we don't. And so we're now all questioning the assumptions. And so one assumption is that the infill rate, right, you know, how much are we going to do infill and how much do we need to build up on the edge? Well, the infill rate in the last six years has essentially been an average of 27%. And the scenario modeling currently suggests that it may be higher, 30 to 33%, because of increased demand for living in communities and close to services. We don't know that. So again, we're questioning all of that. What refill rate should we plan for? And that's actually very important because counties and cities, all jurisdictions, have to determine where we're going to put people and jobs. There's also, you know, if we, if we make the wrong decision, how do we know when we are wrong? What tells us if we're wrong and when do we know? So should we just take in a smaller amount because we can always expand, whereas if you're taking a bigger amount, you can't build the infrastructure? And infrastructure is one of the hugest costs, of course, to our, the growth, the growth in the region. But we're working on all of those policy questions. We've had, we had a local meeting with all the cities that Nancy Crosshair organized, talking about the regional transportation plan, the RTP, for the region and what Plaquemines County's requests are going to be. You know, bicycle and pedestrian linkages to all of the cities, connectors to all of the cities, and then of course, light rail to Oregon City and which configuration do we, do we want? So a lot of really high-level discussions happening that affect our work here, too. I think, I think that's it. You have another one, Ms. Capes?
I just need to ask you, we would like to move on your, on to your agenda for the August work session, the discussion of the police facility. Prior to that, we would like to provide tours of some of the more modern facilities that are in the area. So if-- Just so you kind of get an idea of what we're talking about, because police facilities are fairly complex facility, and I think you need to kind of see them firsthand, and you'll better understand the shortcomings we have. But if you have some dates that you're, could be available--
When?
This month.
In July?
Yeah, prior to the August work session. If we would like to provide--
How many hours do you need?
Well, we're looking at Woodburn and Kaiser.
Woodburn and Kaiser.
Yeah.
We could do this on the same round here?
Yeah.
Four hours?
We can ensure it and to all of us, probably four or five hours to do all three. So I would say probably a half a day.
Okay.
I think probably we'd meet all our schedules, of course, in school, but it might be a weekend day.
Yeah, I can, I can easily say that I'm not available after the 25th of July.
Ever? Like even in October?
No, through, I mean, as July goes.
Oh, okay.
Six days is July.
Whether he wants to send in our--
Yeah, if you'll send those to Chief Conrad or Chris Wasworth, and copy Nancy Adka, we'll have to post that meeting as well.
Okay, great. There are no further communications. We are adjourned.
No, we don't, no, hold it.